Okay Lauren, call this meeting to order. Um, can you... This meeting is a meeting of the West Georgia Local School District Board of Education in Pueblo for the purpose of conducting the West Georgia Local School District's business and does not be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Can you call them please?
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Viers?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallenwald?
Yes.
Ms. Wallenwald?
Yes.
Stand up please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undregatta, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay. Okay, so we are going to start with program reports and presentations from Dr. Ben Kasse.
We're working on it. Good evening, thank you so much for having me tonight. Today we're going to talk about the science of reading. I'm super, of course, excited to talk about this and I have talked about it before, so I will be giving you a condensed version. The science of reading is something that has been identified by the state of Ohio, the Department of Education, and recognized as what it is, which is the body of science which tells us that reading is not intuitive, we are not natural word readers, although a very small percentage naturally learns to read. The majority of readers need to have very explosive teaching to learn how to read, and we know that. So, we have... Are you advancing?
Uh, no.
I guess I'm running too slow, excuse me. So what we're going to talk about this evening is what the state of Ohio is calling the Plan to Raise Literacy, which has been a push in Ohio within the past year and a half, although the irony is that we have been working on the science of reading here over the past eight or so years. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about our timeline, the mandates coming from the state, and ask for your support in making sure that we are completely aligned. So that is what today will be about. Beginning in 24, 25, we need to have mandated four curriculum that aligns to the state of Ohio list that they have provided, which follows the science of reading. Our work in 2017 and 18 began by an audit of our current literacy practices. I'm going to have to order, but I can just talk to you about it, don't even worry about this. In 17 and 18, basically, we as a cohort did an audit of our literacy practices and decided to completely overhaul them and follow the science of reading. Again, the science of reading is literally the research, the body of research way back from 1980, that tells us the ways in which the brain actually learns how to read, and that there are explicit ways to teach reading that enable our students to easily learn how to read, okay? And interventions that follow up for those struggling that are best practices. And so, we, in that timeframe, in 18 and 19, asked you to adopt a program called Haggerty, which teaches explicitly phonological grammar. In 18 and 19, in 19 at the spring, we asked you to adopt foundations, which you did. And so we adopted the resource foundations, which is the explicit teaching of phonics in our classroom. We also asked you in 20 to adopt making meaning, and making meaning taught the explicit instruction of comprehension in terms of reading. So it's a three-pronged program attack, which we didn't implement. Taking you back to the simple real reading, which follows the science of reading, basically word recognition times language comprehension equals reading. So we adopted Haggerty and foundations, which is the word recognition portion of our program. Making meaning was our language comprehension program, okay? So, everything's great. Scarborough's Reading Group is literally underneath those umbrellas, the pieces of those puzzles that those programs explicitly teach. I won't bore you with the details. We've talked about it, and I have presented on this before. This, moving forward, is the timeline. You see our Haggerty adoption, our foundations adoption, our making meaning adoption. In 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24, and as of today, what we have done is we have worked on the implementation of these programs and the explicit teaching of literacy through coaching, fidelity checks, we have been ongoing support and coaching for teachers, okay? And so we have spent all of these years, in particularly in Haggerty and foundations. Well, the state has now come up with a list of comprehension, comprehensive programs that they are mandating that school districts solve, which is good and not good for us, okay? Because not all three of them are on the list. So, comprehensive programs means it follows a clear scope and sequence, it is taught explicitly, it follows the research, it teaches all aspects of language underneath that Scarborough's Reading Group. Am I boring you yet? Close, I'm going to get there, okay? So ultimately, the state has said there are 12 core comprehensive programs identified that we as the Department of Education, who of course are allowing school districts to use to make sure that everyone is aligned with the science of reading. Now, the irony for us is, we have been aligned with the science of reading about eight years before everybody else was, but because others, I think, were slow to get there, they are mandating it by program choice, which is a way to get people there perhaps faster, okay? So, we looked at a variety of options, because here's the thing, here's the sticky weapon. Foundations of Haggerty are approved, making meaning is not, and making meaning did not even apply to get approved. So, that wasn't an option, because they have since stopped making meaning, and the company is making a different version of making meaning while online, okay? So ultimately, we have to choose a different comprehension program to align with our foundational skills program, okay? So we looked at a variety of options, and by we, we had a core team of grade-level representatives from our teaching staff, so Chrissy Jackson is here representing fourth grade, so they're the only people getting their materials, because she's the only one who came tonight, so congratulations, she's in fourth grade. Our principals are central office administrators, that's who's down in the committee, and through a rubric-based process, we looked at four core programs. One was a big publisher program, which looks very much like a historical program, big boxes, textbook-looking resources. We looked at a program that was primarily online, that has very little paperwork products with it. We looked at a comprehensive program that had almost a basal-like reader, many students would get a bulk reader that had elements within it, so a little bit more kind of like history reading programs that you would have experienced with, that we had when we were in school. And then a fourth one, that was a comprehensive with core rigorous texts. This is a comprehensive program, but students are literally in books, class sets of books, independent books, et cetera, okay? Two of those core programs did not have foundational skills with them, meaning, Haggerty, and foundations, we would just add the comprehension program on top of it if we chose those two. If we didn't choose one of those two, the other two had phonics and phonemic awareness as a part of that, and we would either carve out foundations and Haggerty, or we would be choosing between the four programs. So, in summary, after this rubric-based process of lots of conversation, we basically chose the core foundational program that does not have the foundational program as a part of it, the comprehension program, okay? The name of it is Whit and Wisdom. Here are some things that made Whit and Wisdom the name, obviously, wit, wisdom, yes, we're in, but here are some of the things that we think stuck out about Whit and Wisdom. We liked the fact that it carved out those phonetic, phonics, and phonological phonemes. We liked that it carved that out, because we have well-established those two pieces of the puzzle, and we don't want to get rid of the work that we've put in for the odds. And if I'm saying something wrong, please correct me. Also, this program literally has students in books, so, you know, people that teach reading, people that teach English, we want our kids in real books, in that basal readers that aren't necessarily real pieces of literature fiction and that. So we liked that, it was based on that. And also, this nonprofit organization, Knowledge Matters, identified Whit and Wisdom as one of only, I think it was like two or three of the programs on the list, as being particularly strong in that knowledge building, which is a part of Scarborough's Reading Group, is developing knowledge so that you can access reading as you're learning and reading and making this the next connections. It identified Whit and Wisdom as particularly strong in that area, and that was very compelling to our goal. But, having said all of this, it is going to cost you. It is an extensive investment, there's no doubt about it. No matter what we choose, and we have to choose, it is an extensive investment, and so, you know, the purchase will be including these things. It's going to have grade-level level exemplar text, so individual reads, it's going to have full class sets of books, so we're going to get massive amount of books delivered, and we're going to have teacher online and print versions of teacher copies, and then student printed heads. We're looking at, and obviously decodable books that go on particularly a cave panel. So we're looking at the quote, roughly, it is going to be around $200,000. The state of Ohio, in their mandate, is reimbursing individual school districts based in the number of students up to a certain amount, and we are going to get a reimbursement for $90,000. It is going to cost us more than $90,000, which we thought it was going to cost us more than $90,000 just early on a year or so ago when we started looking at the process. We are looking right now at need-to, want-to, dream-of versions of this, what we can adopt, obviously, to give us successfully laid out, and so, when you come back, we will have an actual quote for you that tells you exactly what we're going to buy, that we are hoping to buy for your approval at the next board meeting. So right now, that's what we're looking to. The timeline that I would like us to follow, we're going to talk a little bit about, we're going to have one display next door, I want you guys to take a look through them, absolutely, we can get any questions that you have to answer, but at our next board meeting, after you have a chance to do that, we will put this adoption on for a line and vote, and then if adopted, we would place the order button immediately, say September 10. It will take two to three weeks to get all of the printed materials in, but teachers would have digital access with immediacy, so it will allow our teachers to start looking at the program, to make decisions about implementation, and when might inappropriate implementation be? After quarter one, in the midst of quarter two, before Thanksgiving, you know, they have to look at their content that they're teaching now and make some decisions around it. Our goal, and some people want to start like from a toe, some grade levels are like, ooh, I'm starting to dig this, some people want to take a little bit more time with it, but our goal is that it would be implemented in quarters two or three, depending on the grade level, and regardless that the state is mandating that it be done by the school year. So we have the school year to do it, but we're envisioning that it would be started much before that. We have professional development already in the works, we would wait, of course, for your adoption, but we have representatives from Whit and Wisdom lined up for some of the dates that we have professional development, and our history literacy consultant that has led much of this work is, she said, not to quote the dead father, but every time she gets out, we reel her back in. So we're reeling her back in, and so she has signed up for us, and she'll be back with us this year to help with implementation and likely in the next several years. So that is, that's where we are. The timing looks like it does, because frankly, the state of Ohio all of last year had updated the list, and so we did not want to jump too early in case making meaning made the list. So we were really kind of waiting to see what additions they had to the list, and they finally submitted in May. So, we took her time to look over in the summer, and then met with the other team and Paul.
Questions? The texts that are coming with that, who has, have we vetted all of the texts, or are they pre-vetted by the state? What are we looking at?
They're vetted by the state. It's an enormous amount, and so, you know, as we're doing it, it's one thing to adopt the resource and another to implement. So we will be doing a lot of that work as we're implementing, as they're looking module by module. They come modules of four, so we'll be starting somewhere either in the middle of module one or module two. The entire list, even when you see what we have available for you to look through, is based in module and titles. So we only have a single to module at each grade level, so we don't have every single text, I don't know that you can possibly go through every single text, but as we are planning in PLCs, they will be front-loading and front-planning, and we'll be doing it like that.
So we have, just because we would be approving the texts as a whole, that is what I mean, we're implementing...
You're not approving the resource. You're not approving them as, here's the thing, teachers would always have the ability to use some or not use some, we would always offer some choice in that, if there was something that we felt like that was inappropriate, we would take it out. So what you're doing is you're approving the resources programmatically, and then we're making curricular decisions as we're implementing it.
Okay. What grades are going to be part of this?
Whit and Wisdom goes through eighth grade, we would look to adopt K to six. We looked at sixth grade, we very much liked the texts that sixth grade, the four kind novels, we thought the level of rigor was absolutely applicable for our students, and we were very keen to adopt it in sixth grade, that transitional year when they get to the middle school. Now, how they use it, it's, we're going to take a look at it, kind of unwrap it and see if we want to use it exactly as print. It is a scripted program, so the lessons are scripted, which our elementary teachers have a little bit more experience in that, because Haggerty and foundations are scripted programs. But we haven't, making meaning is scripted too, but it's scripted for 15 minutes versus a 30-minute lesson. So, we'll be, we'll be making this our own, certainly, this will not look just like it is. We have to really kind of unravel it and make it applicable to most of these students, which will be a piece of work as we have in the year.
And parents will have access to it?
Sure, just like with anything, if they want to see it. We will only have the modules here for the next two weeks, but they can see it when it all comes up, yes, for sure.
Okay, so it's not like everything's on, because SEO they can't see.
Today, you can't see everything. Today, you can see on module of each grade level. And after we order it and it is here in the building, they can see anything they want.
But they have to come here for it.
They, after we order it, it will go straight to building, so they would have to make an appointment and go to the building to see it, because we couldn't house it all here, because of the quantity. We'll have to deliver, meaning, we're delivering the materials to the building, because it would be too much to deliver to parent trying to get it to two appropriate buildings, so it will go straight to the buildings, so they can look at it at their buildings.
Assuming the programs will be expensive too, and expensive for this. Having seen us, or having seen not just us, reading programs going from phonics, concentrate on phonics, concentrate on whole language, to what we've now developed, and we're saying now, or you're saying now, that the state is mandating that we have to have lives in whole language, but we have a choice of the programs, and we're happy with what the state is mandating.
Well, we are, because we started, we believe in the science, we believe that there is research that shows us that there are better ways, that there are exemplary ways to teach reading, and that it is our responsibility to make sure, to do the best for our children, that we are utilizing those instructional techniques, and also the content that's appropriate. And so, literally, in 2017, when really nobody was talking about the science of reading, we were up to our eyeballs in the science of reading, and everybody at West Georgia literally upended what they were doing in our classrooms to adopt the principles of the science of reading. And we did all of that, because we knew that it was the right thing to do, the best and tool, and now, 2024, the state of Ohio is like, hey, this is the right thing to do, and this is the best thing to do. So, we are so far ahead of the game, I can't even begin to tell you in terms of our teacher knowledge, you know, the last, during the summer, the state of Ohio has mandated professional development and online courses, some have taken from it, yes. And so, our teachers came and all were like, we do it all already, you know, like, well, right, because that's the work that we really have been doing. So, for us, this is literally compliance, a compliance piece, although we have looked at it, and we're being positive, as an opportunity, an opportunity because we think we can get a little bit of more bang for the buck, because making meaning is a very, Whit and Wisdom has more, more content, more to it, a little bit more in terms of background knowledge and vocabulary, and we like the way that it can go to sixth grade. So we're looking at, we'd like an opportunity to strengthen even what is a very strong literacy partner at West Georgia, as it's possible.
And it's kind of higher maybe, because having had to look for literacy, or act back, the child of, you know, from 1999, 2000, 2001, that had a science that the brain does, reads, that we're finally, or almost, because that was something we were doing back.
Well, we've been doing it since at least 1950, that's ours.
Well, the irony is, most of your teaching staff learn to teach a language, so the way that they learn to instruct is totally flies in the face of the science of reading. So, you know, again, I take every opportunity I can to thank the staff, because I don't know many staffs of people that willingly throw out everything that they have, and they have created, and they have worked so hard for, and have ended everything they know, because something was better. The perception was something was better, and something was more right for me to do it, to serve kids, and these guys did it, and I'll tell you, we are still working on it, we will always be working on it, but I am just so impressed, you know, being acknowledged, and having done things a certain way for a long time, it's a really difficult thing to give up what you've known to be true in the classroom, and they've done it to the benefit of our students, so I'm grateful.
Just to piggyback a little bit off Pam's side, I think this is an approach that for those of us who are over 60, simply we learn the science of reading, we learn the phonics, phonemic awareness, stopping at, you know, letters, putting them together on words, et cetera. So it really is old school, but it works, and to your point, people who are in their 40s now learning the whole language approach, we're not embracing anymore. So it was really difficult for them to transition from that back to the way that some of us learned, so kudos to them.
So, this is where we are now. We will set up Whit and Wisdom next door, you can come and take a look whenever, happy meeting with you if you have questions, and then there will be a line item vote for the adoption at the next board meeting.
And that will be for the future?
Yeah, this will be here for the two weeks, and you can see the other ones we looked to, you'd like, you know, or some of those.
Thank you, Dr. Ben Kasse. Okay, so we have public remarks, and we'll start with Katie Davis. Do I scan here? You'll go over there to the microphone, please, so you will have three minutes.
Well, I find it for five. I'm trying to talk to her again.
Oh, and if you could state your aim and address for the remarks.
Good evening, my name is Katie Davis, and our family resides at 955-9 Winchester Valley. We have five children who have always been at West G, and my oldest is 11, going into sixth grade, so this is our seventh year in the school district. My comment tonight is regarding transportation. I'm a strong advocate for West G schools overall, I volunteer as much as possible, and sub sometimes as well. We have had transportation issues for the past few years, and as I wrote to you in email last week, things are trending worse, but I'd like to speak tonight to the larger environment here beyond just the buses for my children. From my perspective, parents have been trying to advocate for improvements in the transportation department for the past few years. Collectively, we have requested five things. One, bus routes as promised of an hour or less. Remember, we bus very young students who are expected to hold their bottles, ladders, and be on good behavior while doing so. Two, bus routes as promised of first on, first off. This ensures that all routes are fair. Three, GPS tagging of buses, so that we can monitor when the bus is arriving, have our students ready at the end of the driveway, and greet them off the bus. Four, group stops only in neighborhoods that want them. For example, our street has no sidewalks, no lighting, and curves that make it hard to see pedestrians. And number five, more buses on the road. We want to see additional advertisements and recruitment activities, and are supportive of them being paid very well. I believe that having as many families ride the bus as possible is best for the West G community, because it is the best option for working parent schedules. It is unnerving to hear the prior messages paraphrasing, "Don't worry, after the first few weeks, when families start to pull their students off the bus, routes will get shorter." When families choose to not ride the bus because the bus routes are unsufferable, it is a failure of our district. This causes many lost work hours to parents and congests all the streets surrounding the schools. Many of us have no option except the bus. It appears to me that the promises that have been made to parents are not in the board's policy manual. The only relevant passage I see is a reference to state law standards. I'm asking you to put those promises into the manual. If the goal of the transportation department is only to meet the state minimum guidelines, then it is not in the spirit of West Georgia. We are bombarded with information on the importance of our children's test scores ranking within the top 1% of the state of Ohio, but I wonder, how do we rank with transportation satisfaction? How do we rank with offering competitive compensation packages to bus drivers? How are we outcompeting neighboring districts to recruit? We have ETO meetings in brainstorm with the administrators of the schools, but where are the community meetings where we get face time with the transportation department? We see big banners at Lindsay that it is in the top 1% of Ohio, but where are the big banners that say, "Come drive for West G, we have top 1% pay"? We get countless emails requesting us to fill out cumbersome forms, but the last transportation survey was done in November of 2022, almost two years ago, and from my perspective, results were ignored. We got an email saying routes will be posted to Infinite Campus, but no apologies or explanations as to why our routes are worse than last year, and no dialogue around what is being done to improve them. I love seeing the improvement event that was held in June first, but have to assume that it was not sufficient to keep the promises made to us, so why weren't there more of them? When is the next one scheduled? The answers to these questions are the answers we are hungry for. I have a babysitter ordered to be here, so I apologize if I have to leave before the end, but you can call me anytime to continue this discussion. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. It is our policy not to have, like, respond right now, but we will look at these concerns, and in our next meeting, we will come back, circle back around to them, so you can watch it online, so that you don't have to get a babysitter, but we'll be in contact.
Thank you.
Christine Riley.
Hi, my name is Christine Riley, I reside at 13422 Glen Hill Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also am concerned with the transportation issues the district continues to face. In my case, I tried to contact the transportation department numerous times on Friday, but my child, my children's bus times were drastically changed overnight, but the phones, no, the phone rang and rang with no voicemail access, despite this being the preferred method of communication as stated on the website. I was finally able to get through today, and we say that they weren't sure anything could be done about my... be done about my children's bus stops. While I'm, my fourth grader has an hour and twenty-one minute bus ride to Lindsay and an hour and twenty-minute ride home from Lindsay. She is on the bus from seven fourteen AM until they reach Lindsay at eight thirty-five. Then she departs Lindsay at three twenty and rides the bus until four forty-one PM. And that isn't even to our house. It's, she gets dropped off at a group stop on caves and has to walk to our home. This is above the district's promise of no more than one hour bus rides for students. No child should be picked up first and dropped off last, which is exactly what is happening. There should be a rotation, as there has been every year, with either one long ride to school or one ride, longer ride home from school. In the past years, my children have had a longer ride in the morning and a shorter ride in the afternoon. In talking to transportation today, I showed, I discussed that with them and they said there was nothing that they could do with this time. One long bus ride is understandable, but rides close to an hour and a half both days is unacceptable for our students. For some perspective, I work in South Cleveland. I need to leave my house at seven forty-five AM to get to work by eight ten. By the time I leave, my daughter has already been on the bus for thirty-one minutes. I leave work at four ten, then arrive home at four thirty-five. At this point, after my eight-hour workday and forty-minute commute for both the morning and afternoon, I will get home before my child even gets off the bus, and a group stop nonetheless. This is not okay. While I understand the lack of bus drivers is an issue, I can't help but think that there are other ways routes can be devised or modified so the same children are not always picked up and dropped off last. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was, and there goes. We're going to move on to the routine items. Resolution two thirty, two seventy-three, for the G management of West G, I have a wonderful education. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the role, please. Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-four, to preserve March for July twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the role, please. Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-five, is to approve additional per DM Ag for our certified staff appointments.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Call the role, please. Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-six is to approve classified staff appointments for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second. Any discussion? Call the role, please. Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-seven is to accept a classified staff reservation, which should not be a medical conversation day.
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
This is obviously part of the issue with buses, when you have two transportation people that. Yes. One is already one. Okay. One percentage, right, so started.
Call the role, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-eight is to approve supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
So moved. All right. Any discussion? Call the role, please. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two seventy-nine is to approve service contracts for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second. Any discussion? Call the role, please. Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution two eighty is another resolution to authorize the award of service contract in athletics for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Call the role, please. Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Resolution two eighty-one is to approve proposed middle school fields, perhaps for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
Got a question on that couple. Um, in many changes in costs this year, is this pretty typical of the?
Megan, how about it?
I, I think it's pretty comparable. A, a few years ago, we did forty in, um, DC and Williamsburg, so the cost was more expensive than the two nights that were proposed, so a little bit less, uh, expensive. And then, um, our trip for seventh graders instead of going to the third world, we're going to Cleveland this year, which is a change, um, and should be less, uh, expensive.
Now, when it says the cost for student, do the students pay that?
The families.
The families pay that? Do we have, uh, anything in place if a family can't afford it? Do we have a mechanism?
We do, and we are thinking about, um, offering fundraising, which we haven't historically done, but I do think that we really want drivers to, 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 so we're going to look at, offer that.
Yeah, I think it's great to be in Cleveland, right? I hope that's, so much here.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
It's a pretty good deal to build a, as far as the attendance.
Call the role, please. Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution two eighty-two is to declare emergency circumstances and to update board policies listed relative to holidays and employment of substitutes on the first and final reading, uh, due to the timing for the beginning of the square.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Call the role, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Wait, wait, sorry, I do have some.
Sure.
I get confused that way because they're together, which they don't seem, so what's the policy?
We're leaving the three readings first.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, next, I can ask my, all right, we'll go with that. Call the role, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Resolution two eighty-three is to approve the first and final reading of these very different board policies, forty-four, three-nine, and three-one-twenty, oh, four.
So moved. Second.
Now, yeah.
Now you introduce.
All right, I just, I noticed that, so we're going to have substitutes who only have to have high school education, which, I'm sure we can find good people to do that. I just am curious what the certification is, what is the license? And as I say, you do have to have a license, what does that entail?
They have temporary license from the state. It's a license which allows them to substitute each, this was implemented during COVID. When substitutes were in such short demand, such high demand, so short supply, yes.
High demand, short supply.
High demand, supply. And now, uh, and now.
And I mean, it wouldn't be a practice.
I mean, no, we, 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 the situation we've encountered, we have, we have managed to find some substitutes who are excellent substitute teachers, not necessarily long-term substitutes, but some excellent substitute teachers who do not have a four-year degree. And so in order to be able to still continue to get those individuals to come in to substitute for us, we really need this policy, this, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a resolution which is an amendment to an existing policy that allows us to utilize the situation that existed during COVID, moving forward on a one-year basis. And the reason for this is that sometimes when we have substitutes in short supply, we're asking our specialist teachers to cover, or in communities and teachers, having them move around from class to class, it's really not opportune. But in fact, some of the people that we have who don't have a completed four-year degree are very, very capable to coming in and substituting in a classroom for a day. So it's really to alleviate the substitute shortage. In some cases, it's really difficult to find substitute bus drivers, as you know, but it's not so difficult to find substitute teachers if we can utilize this pool of people who don't have the four-year degree completed.
Do we have any limits on, we're not going to use, they would, they would use magic was for, I think, two weeks or, right?
When we have a long-term opening, we work very, very diligently to have fully licensed staff members to be some sort of, any kind of long access. Um, and we've been fairly successful in that endeavor, at least content area specialists. So these, this pool that we have, um, really started with us during COVID and we have found to be very reliable and very good at implementing a day here, a day there, not necessarily for a long-term substitution. They haven't been used for a long-term substitution, probably would not be used.
Well, I would, I mean, do we need to put something in the policy that stipulates that? I wouldn't be in favor of that at all.
I don't think you need to, I think, just to the practice. I can give you an example, um, we have for a, a time, for a great deal of time, utilized substitutes who have a four-year degree but not a teaching certificate. And I remember, um, getting into a little bit of conflict my first year here because we had a long-term sub. And the person who had been placed in the position was a person with a four-year degree but they did not have a license in the teaching area, and I would approve them permanently moving forward. So I can just tell you, um, I want someone with the appropriate license if it's a long-term sub and or someone who's at least in a very, very, um, with a very related license. For instance, last year, we had someone who was out on maternity leave and we had to hire, it was a math teacher, and we had to bring someone in who was a math teacher, and this was a studying twelve position, the person who was out. We brought in someone with a four-nine math certificate, turned out to be very strong, very good, but it was, it was, it was actually a, it was, what, tenth grade class or eleventh grade class, it was outside this certification area, but he still was a certified licensed math teacher and grades four-nine. So we're always, we're always careful to try to bring in someone who's as closely qualified as to the position as we can. But I, I don't think you need to necessarily specify that, but we would not, we would not be bringing someone to use a long-term sub. And doesn't the board generally approve long-term subs also? So if you saw someone without the license, you would be able to say no.
Okay.
Okay, you, you would stop it.
Okay. All right, now, you're not going to be there, so it doesn't matter what you, what you do as a parent.
No, no, no. It's a long-term substitute.
What is considered a long-term substitute, are you asking?
I think that would be more than a few days, we consider it long-term when we start looking now. Sometimes that's easier than other times. I mean, math, high school math was, it's tricky one time. We start looking very early and we, they, and I call colleges, um, we do a lot of due diligence, and then sometimes it's just the best, this is the best I can offer you. And in that case, um, our sub, to Richard's point, worked out fabulously. He was a wonderful substitute. Um, he had taken the courses that he, he had taken much higher level courses than like this teaching, but technically the substitute for the licensure area was just a year or two off. But, um, it, it really just depends when, when it's an easily licensed area, where I don't know the time, outside of a few instances where the licensure is very hard to get, even to hire. Um, other than that, we're, we've always found licensure area that subs for a long-term position.
Sometimes it's your teacher, who will come back for a short period, trying to not want.
Yeah, no, for that.
We beg, we plead.
And it depends too on how much notice we think given. Obviously, if someone is, you know, um, gets sick, they, they might be a less knowledgeable person at first, but then they can make those adjustments just because they're in the first couple of days. Doesn't mean they'll stay there, so, and ultimately, that's our decision, so.
Got it.
And I know that when a teacher is, is out, they will have already prepared lesson plans, or presumably have already prepared lesson plans. Um, can you say roughly how much ahead of the lesson plans get done? So that, I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, if a teacher's out for one day, the lesson plan's already there and the substitute doesn't have the same kind of responsibilities or whatever you want to phrase it, than if someone's out for three weeks.
Yeah. It depends, I mean, it, it would depend on the circumstances, obviously, the teacher themselves. I mean.
Yeah.
I know somebody very well personally during maternity leave that may have planned most of the lessons for the entirety of her maternity leave. I'm just saying, if you're type A, sometimes you do these things. So, I mean, it, it really just depends, and it's a plan. One, our, our teachers are very diligent and, and sometimes want to have a lot of control, which I appreciate and respect. So it really depends. We also have, um, consultants in certain, um, licensure areas. So for the math position, I know that one of our math, um, consultants that works, um, with our staff worked very much hand in hand to make sure continuity at service for our students, that high-level curriculum, high-level instruction was being delivered in those classrooms. So we do a lot to support that, and it just, it really is something different each and every time, but, um, a lot of, usually for us, if it's a long-term subbing position, if it's not a baby, it's usually something that is unforeseen, and so, um, we work really hard to just sometimes support them on the back end, depending on who we can get in the room.
Yeah.
Call the role, please. Mrs. Heiple?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yeah.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution two eighty-four, I believe, will need some explanation, so if I could get a motion that's placed on the table, I'd like to discuss this a little bit with the board.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Your high review board requires that school districts, boards of education approve bus routes within ten days of start of school. Um, I have never known any school district that approved bus routes that didn't change significantly after that time. Um, but even my districts in Ohio have to follow a number of rules related to schools, um, and to transportation of students. No school district in Ohio is required to transport students in grades nine through twelve, so some school districts do not transport high school students. In the lower grades, the school districts are required to transport students who live more than two miles from the school, students who live within two miles of school and walk to school. So when schools are in dire straits financially, sometimes they implement policies like that. Um, our, our issue with bus drivers recently has not been, it's been, um, a result of, of financial need. If we could get the drivers here, we could put together a couple different recruiting opportunities, we'll do more. Um, it's tough to get drivers to come when, uh, in many cases, they aren't there and they can shop around. I think here, our, our pay is quite competitive in that.
Yes, and then we also made adjustments in the compensation during our negotiations slash here to add that the additional pay for drive time, city time for our builders, which I very much appreciate.
And the bus drivers were influential in, in changing the contract because it did, it did benefit, um, benefit them. I guess one of the things I'm saying is I'm not, I'm not trying to make excuses. When parents come to us and they have real concerns, then we have to address those concerns. And when we have concerns, when we have parents whose students are riding the bus for a great deal of time, those will be adjusted, and they will be adjusted. Those will be adjusted, and they will be adjusted. This year, things were complicated in the last week. As I say, by the fact that one of our bus routes was gone. That bus route needs to be reinstated and put back in place. But for now, we have to transport students who use that bus route. I'm not minimizing the concerns of parents. I thought the concerns tonight were expressed very succinctly and very, very appropriately. So thank you for presenting those. And I can give you assurances, not only will you discuss this next board meeting, but the specific concerns that were raised tonight will be addressed. I talked to Scott about this already because I know that this is something that is important, not only from the standpoint of convenience for parents, but also for safety of the kids. And so I'm asking that the board approve the routes with the understanding that the routes will be changed significantly. And also, I've never, as I say, I've been in the districts. I've served as superintendent through different districts where routes did not change after they were approved by the board because they have to change. R licensure changes, a lot of students, you know, stay on the buses. Some routes become pretty feasible and some times routes are bad and some times routes are deleted. In this case, there won't be any deletion of routes, we're going to have to add routes.
Well, I have a lot of questions though because even when you look at the route, there's some things in here that make no sense. For example, bus 3025 is leaving Lindsay at 3:31 and, and then leaving Westwood at 3:30, arriving at Lindsay at 3:22 and leaving Westwood at 3:30.
Even I can't address the specifics, although I am.
But the problem is that then that's going to move all those kids in another 20 minutes because that's not right. And that's a real concern. So it's like, you want us to approve something that is inaccurate. And I have a problem with that.
I understand that. But it's, there are going to be some inaccuracies in most buses beginning of the year.
I mean, I don't know how many more like are there or like that.
There will be some, there will be some.
It seems to me that, and I've been on board for three years, but it is every year. You cannot solve this problem. And I, like, the first year I thought, well, it's COVID and I trusted that people stopped riding the bus. And then last year I thought, well, people are new and, you know, you said it'll change. I'm like, you know, people stop riding the bus because the bus is awful. It's the timing sucks. And parents, I'm the only person on the board that has kids on the buses. And parents change their schedule. I used to leave my office at 2:30 so that I could get to Lindsay to pick my daughter, my daughter and son up, so that I could rush them to, to Westwood to grab them because they were on the bus so long. And my kids were not the longest on the bus. I was grateful that they were not. I mean, there were kids that live on Cades Road, at the corner of Cades and 87, who if they had gotten off the bus at Westwood and walked down Cades, they would have made it home sooner than the bus. It, it changes because parents rearrange our schedules. I, it's like we can't get this right ever. And only once, shame on me, but this is, now it's like the third year that we can't get it right. The kids have to be home in an hour. These are little kids. They have PSR after school. They have all of these activities. I have coaches emailing me saying, we understand that you'll get off the bus until 4:45. We start practice at 4:45, you'll be late every single time, you know? I need to know what, what we're doing to change this. And it has to be changed very, very quickly.
I know, I know we have to promise I'm really creative. I also think that it was not a total, it should not have been a total surprise that this bus driver would come up. As much as we say it's a surprise, I don't think that it should have been. And that's, that's a problem. We have to anticipate, managers have to anticipate. They have to, you know, I think I read that we have 22 buses and we need 23. I think we need 24. I don't think the goal is, because 23 gets us back to where we were last year, which was not acceptable. 22 is putting us in this, I get that this is a real challenge, I do. But we have to promise I'm really creative. You know, like, maybe there's different ways to schedule.
If I mislead you by saying it's a surprise, I think, I think if there was an awareness that this was a possibility, but it was also hoped there would not be the resignation of private.
Yeah, well, we need to stay on top of that because we can't afford to have any more. And what I see here, I mean, I get, but this comes back to a management issue, right?
Yes.
That's the conclusion I would come to. So, I mean, I have all kinds of emails that I will give you as well. I mean, this is like, these parents came and it's great, but there were a couple of parents, because tonight I think we had some conflicting things going on with the school, so they couldn't come. And there would have been a lot more, I think. I mean, I have a lot. And you guys might not be saying ones, I never know. I don't know who did some, yeah, and so.
Here's the one thing that was a little bit frustrating for me was that I asked the principals, did you receive concerns? Because any of the principals could have handled this. And I was told, well, I have one person in the problem, but it wasn't really a complaint. And another one said there were a handful of calls. The principals didn't get the calls. I didn't get the calls. And they went to the board.
I don't, I know, well, they went to the board because they called transportation and there was no licensure. And, and I think they're trying to go the route that they think. I, I got the feeling that the parents that sent a note to me were so beyond being frustrated that this was their last.
I can recall some places who have been answered. All kinds of that, no matter what topic, they were very frustrated. And so I'm sincere when I say to people, your situations we look into. I'm not going to be happy or satisfied with situations where, where kids are expected to unride or to ride the bus for unreasonable amounts of time. That just shouldn't happen.
Now, we have four students. I think we're eating lunch at 10:30 and then not getting home until 4:40 or 4:40. And I don't think they'll get home at 4:40. Because I don't think this is, I mean, just looking at a few, I hope that. I know A bus driver did her route just so she could become, it's a new route for her. She did her route to be more familiar. Just doing the route was a little over an hour. That's what most happen. So it's not a good situation. I mean, I just don't think we should, should pretend that it is or that it's going to be easily fixed. But I get the principals would have, but I don't think there's anything they could have done.
I don't think they should have worked. Transportation, maybe gotten through some communication or transportation subsidies.
Well, I think that a lot of this just came, I, I only just got a lot of this because I think it just got published. So, I mean, a lot of parents are just responding because they got, they got a schedule and then it changed overnight, and some of them have changed twice. And I will tell you, there's another issue that somebody stopped me right before I was coming here, where somebody from transportation contacted a parent in a neighborhood and asked them if another parent could drop their child off at that house so they could get picked up there so that their route would not, so that they wouldn't have such a long drive. That's not appropriate.
That's not appropriate, but I also can't, can't spot the inappropriateness of it because I don't know who did it or how they addressed it.
Yeah, and they're not going to, they're not going to do it, of course, as it comes with all kinds of, yeah.
The other thing that I will say, and I'm not saying is to say that transportation is where it should be, but we had a train a week ago and everything was slowed down for four days. We didn't have power. So there was a delay. I mean, there was a four-day blackout for, I'm not saying things could have all been fixed in those four days, but people could have certainly gotten in audience. It was, it was a rush to get things open. It wasn't just because of transportation's domino effect. Food and our freezers was gone. And we had, we had, we had issues that needed attention in the buildings and stuff.
But that can all be communicated. There was help.
Well, and we do have Paul Summer to rework the routes. I mean, I don't, I don't know why the day school ends in May, May 30th, let's start reworking the routes.
That's right. I think it starts a reworking process, and that did.
So it's, why is it the same every single year?
I think in some cases, there were different circumstances this year with a couple of things that were talked about. And I'm not saying that's great. I'm not saying it's something that we're going to say is fine, but we're not. But in reference to Scott, you know, I think it needs to happen.
So I would like to, I, I know that I spoke to you earlier and I asked a question that I don't think you quite had the answer to. So maybe Scott has the answer to it. The GPS thing, because that's actually, it was already something I asked before.
Well, it was raised tonight.
Yeah, Mrs. Morelli asked it, or I'm sorry, that was Mrs. Davis that asked it. Are we close to having parents be able to track where their child's bus is? Because that's something I think that would not make it better, but help at least for those parents that are struggling to, what time do I leave work? And if we're leaving work early and then the bus is 45 minutes behind where they were supposed to, I think that could help offset some of the anxiety of these. It won't make it better, but at least we know when the kids are arriving so that we can make better arrangements for some of the coffee bus stop.
That's something that we are, we are finalizing. And we're waiting to see. I'm going to talk to Mrs. Caneglio about the functionality of that. But we do have the capabilities of that and we really wanted to utilize that as well.
So rolling out soon?
Let me, let me, I'll follow up with you, but I'll talk to Mrs. Caneglio about where we are specifically with that, that bus.
The group staff, here comes the bus guy.
Yeah, here comes the bus.
To tame the program. Because you have a different.
Yeah, Sheridan just started bus, bus rate.
Yeah, it can't be real complicated, I wouldn't think.
GPS. It doesn't have the GPS on the bus.
That's what I mean. I don't think that should be. And I think the group staffs, I'm going to keep coming back to those because I just don't think we should be having that. I just have a problem. I go on my street and if you, if it's 4:30 at night, when I do walking, I don't even walk to the end of my street because people coming around the corner just don't, they're not used to seeing people standing right there and children are even smaller, and they're just going to come around that corner. I don't like it. It's, we have early, it's going to be dark when some of these kids get home. And they have group staffs. We have narrower roads. We have icy streets sometimes, slippery streets, dark streets. My street is one mile wide and there's no lights. And you drop kids off, they want to drop kids off one place. Parents can't even see their kids. You know, the houses aren't, it's not like a neighborhood. I get it. In some neighborhoods, you can walk to school. They have sidewalks, they have houses one right over the other. There's people watching. We don't have that. We don't have the benefit of that. I mean, this is a different animal. And so we have to work, that's why I don't think it's 22, I think it's 24. You know what I mean? Whatever the goal is, and I get it. I mean, I think we have some trainees right now, bus drivers, right?
And we're going to run another recruiting night in fall.
And we don't have any subs though right now.
We do not currently.
See, they, you know, need subs.
We recruit two sub positions.
Yeah, we've got to, we've got to be ahead of that. And I know we have retirements coming up.
We do.
So we got to, I mean, it's going to take us from now until they retire, probably, to get somebody and to get them trained. So I mean, we're working right for that.
You're not doing it, just.
Anyway, all right. So you want us to approve the routes, but, and I get that, but I have to have some kind of caveat on it. I don't approve them for two weeks, two months or something, or four weeks or another day to begin. I don't know what you guys think. I can't approve.
That's fair enough. It's fair to approve the routes.
You know, that I know are wrong.
But the LC changes, the CC changes.
Well, and that's, there's going to have to be a lot of communications stuff because if, if there's still going to be more changes made, you know, parents are, you know.
So are you, you're approving the bus stops?
It's the routes with the stops that's safe, but it's.
A prime time period.
And saying the stops are basically safe.
You think that that will?
Well, we meet again in.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
And we can look at it.
And we can look at it. We have two steps.
See what progress has been made. We can, we can also delineate further than what changes have been made in those.
And that would be beneficial.
Sometimes the stops will change as well. We did have a situation, I believe, two years ago where one of the routes was one where the bus was going past the house and the parents were saying, why is my child, why do my children have to ride the entire bus the whole way around? And it was a situation where the student had to cross the roads to get to the house. And the complaint from the parents was, my children have been crossing the road there since third grade and now eighth grade, so it's more dangerous now. And that was one where we changed it and we made the route back 300 feet and it was square.
Because a bus driver can stop and not open the door and let the child out until all the traffic has stopped. Once the traffic has stopped, then there's, I don't see any reason why, especially middle school or high school, because it can't foster, I mean.
I love it.
You know, obviously.
It just depends on whether, you know, you talked about streetlights and sidewalks. I mean, some roads are bigger than others.
I, I get it, but if the traffic has stopped.
Nobody can through.
Right, no one can get through. And the bus driver, you know, has to be responsible. But anyway, that's the only thing. And I know she doesn't like making left turns either. Maybe they're going to have to make some left turns, I don't know.
Very, very few changes.
Yeah.
I would propose a motion to amend the motion that's next.
I believe you have a 10-day.
It's 10 days.
10-day.
I, I will make the motion and you can tell me if you continue.
Okay.
Okay? I move that we amend the motion that is on the floor to approve the motion that is on the floor for 10 days or for two weeks. For two weeks.
Till September 9.
September 9th, meeting at which point we will have a revised schedule in front of us to approve the motion forward. Have a seat. We have to approve, we have to approve this motion.
This motion.
So you need a motion to amend.
That's what I was trying to do.
Right, I need a motion to amend.
My motion to amend is to.
To put a, put a time limit.
Put a time limit on this, to approve this motion and for there to be a new schedule.
You don't want amended to approve it, you want amended to add a time.
Add, yes.
Okay. And then, and then we approve the whole.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. We don't do this enough.
Or an amendment to add.
Yes.
What is the next?
September 9.
The amendment is that we would have amended the bus routes for.
That's three weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Okay. At the next board meeting.
At the next board meeting.
I would say September 9.
Yeah. So we don't have to call a special board meeting?
No. You've met the deadline.
We've met the deadlines. We have to meet the deadline. But we're also putting you on, you collectively.
Thank you.
On notice that we expect there to be some changes.
A revised.
A revised schedule and we want to see it. I want to see it at the next board meeting. I said, well, time is over.
I second that.
I can have a vote for the amendment to approve the resolution as it is with the parents.
No, not to approve, to amend the.
Again, the motion for the September 9 deadline to have a revised. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
I have to make it and anyone.
Yes.
I got a motion to approve.
Well, that was separate from the amendment. That was in the, we said we're running the motion.
As amended. Yeah, it doesn't take too long. Amendment. I can.
The original motion has amended to include the.
To include the amendment, adding the September 9 deadline.
Yes. So moved.
Second. No, it's already been moved. It hasn't been, the original motion was.
The original motion was moved.
It's been moved. The summer just rolled in.
I know.
Okay.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Lovett?
Yes.
And Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
All right, speeding along. Resolution 285 is to approve the full distribution agreement between proactive behavior services, I will say, and West Jago Local Schools for 24, 25.
Second. Any discussion? Call the role, please. Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitehead?
Yes.
Resolution 286 is to approve the amendment to the contract between West Jago Local Schools and ADI Food Systems Incorporated.
Call the role. Second. Any discussion? Call the role, please.
Ms. Lovett? Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mrs. Callen Walsh?
Yeah.
Resolution two eighty-seven is to approve the agreement between the education service center of North East Ohio, West Chicago local schools for the twenty-four, twenty-five square.
So who? Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mrs. Callen Walsh?
Yeah.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Resolution two eighty-eight is to approve the agreement for admission tuition. This is between the education service center of North East Ohio, which is the passport school program that West Chicago local schools for twenty-four, twenty-five square.
So move. Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mrs. Callen Walsh?
Yeah.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution two eighty-nine takes up the resignation from superintendent effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two?
Thirty.
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 What did you say?
Well, I have to take vacation.
That is the line of approval.
Yeah.
Call the roll.
Second.
Discussion? All right, I'm gonna read something. Okay. So when Dr. Markford was hired by the West Chicago school board ten years ago, we ranked one hundred and thirty-third in the state of, of, out of over six hundred and fifty other districts. That board wanted to be in the top five percent in five years. Dr. Markford had even grander plans for our students, staff, and community. He began strategically putting a team together, which when coupled with our dedicated teachers and staff, created the opportunity for the growth we had experienced. His ability and desire to mentor administrators has created a team of educators who clearly saw the vision and were able to perform in a way that helped our community's children access and apply their education in a way that supports their growth and development as productive members of our society. As he enters his final year in formal education, we can once again expect to see our district highly ranked. But do not mistake, that ranking is merely students performing well on state tests. That is only a piece of the puzzle. Our students have been taught content knowledge in a manner that allows for critical thinking and application at a significantly higher level than in years past. But this has also translated into our students becoming more interested in areas outside of traditional academics. Our students are finding experiences in internships and volunteering. They truly are beginning to see how interconnected so many seemingly disparate ideas and experiences are. This district is on a path now that felt so distant ten years ago. From one thirty-three to ten is the true testament of the commitment Dr. Markford made to us and the team he has cultivated to continue this work. And this board is grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I hope people realize this was no surprise. I, I said in an interview with the Chicago Valley Times over a year ago that this year would be my last year. And Karen took me to task saying, you announced that, now you have to announce it to the district. And so the district will know in time. So I, I told people all along. When I, when I came here, I would have guessed probably five years, because as you know, I've retired from a previous district. But it's, it's the successes that we've had here that we're happening here. It's the fact that, as Mrs. Sherwood said, we have phenomenal team here. We have educators, and including in those, those ranks are our cafeteria people, our bus drivers, our classified staff, our certified staff, and our administrators. And we have really, really good play with us because we have outstanding schools who come to us from homes that truly provide for the kids. So that we get kids who come to school well fed, well clothed. We don't have to do so many of the extraneous tasks that other schools have to do to get kids prepared to learn, because the parents do that for us. And so it's been a privilege to be here and, as I say, this should come as, as no surprise to anyone. When I, when I left my last district, it was with the idea that I would do something and it knew what it would be. This time I know what the something is. It's gonna be devote time to my family and to my family and so spend time doing those things. So I'm excited about it. I feel like the district is in a very, very good place to go forward and I expect the district to have many, many successes in the future. So thank you.
Call the roll please. Mrs. Whitehead?
Yes.
Mrs. Callen Walsh?
Yeah.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
So we are discussing new business and suggestions to be included on the future agenda. Do we have anything up there?
Yes, maybe buses.
That's true, buses go back on. And then.
Could we have, could we get some enrollment information?
Sure.
For a brief.
That's right.
We'll have, but we have.
We also have some seats.
Any news?
I'd like to have, I mean, not only a discussion of buses, but we talked about that our salaries are in line, but I'd like to see some of that data and see what other districts are doing or whether they're having the same. We'll talk with some of the other districts and find out whether they're having the same kinds of problems and what they're doing to deal with.
It seems like we may be not, not necessarily connected, but very soon. We need to be discussing maybe a master plan and where we're going forward and timing and following and all that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think that, you know, we're obviously, we weren't gonna put it up in the November election because.
Right.
We're, pardon the pun, we're kinda taxed right now, so. And it was bad that it was blowing for it.
Right.
It's a little wrong. So I think that we were kind of holding for now, but it is definitely something we need to decide to move on, so.
And a big part of that is that we need the people that are going to be active in the campaign for, you know, eleven.
Right.
It's not, our job is to move forward.
Right, and Dr. Markford and.
Right.
Mrs. Talbot, none of them, they can't take Markford as.
Yeah, they're not gonna be the chair of the.
No. So I, I agree with you, Dr. Beers. Anything else? Um, Super Dollar?
There are a couple of events coming up in the near future that are kind of exciting, that's for us, and for the community at large. Unity Day is being sponsored by the West Chicago Chamber of Commerce. And that involves a lot of businesses, a lot of organizations, sort of celebrating the, the end of summer, I guess, and getting everybody back together, back in town, back in school, whether they come here, whether they go to private schools. It's hosted here, so you'll come up here and find a lot of food trucks, a lot of displays from businesses. It's really sort of an exciting day and it's very, very well attended. That's coming up Sunday, which is August twenty-fifth, so we'll be here very, very soon. And then probably one of the lines of that, but a little more exclusive party, I guess, one could say, because it's a little more restricted generally, is Rock the Block, which is hosted by the schools, which is sort of an alumni type activity. It's held before on one of the Friday night football games. Bring back alum, bring back former staff members. A lot of our current students come to that as well, even the kids who like to run around to the football games. They and their parents are here. And it follows along on a little smaller scale, I think, what you see at, at Unity Day. There are food trucks there, there are activities for the kids, sort of fun games. It's a nice way to kick off, unintended, you know, the football season too. So, so make sure you put those two events on your calendar. That one begins, what time? Five o'clock? Five, five, or six? Or October one? I have to make my brochure. Eleven to five, eleven to five. But just see more on it, just pick on dates, keep in mind, one is Sunday, the twenty-fifth of August, and the other is Friday, the ninth of September. It's five o'clock. Friday is sixth of September, I guess. Five P M, I was right, I was guessing. Thank you.
Any board reports? Okay. And we're gonna move into executive session. We've got several things happening in executive session today. We are going to be discussing personal matters, appointment and or employment, compensation, and investigation of charges and or complaints. For the first part of this, we will be inviting Dr. Markford and Mrs. Talbot in with us. And then they'll be leaving and at some point then we'll be bringing in the three people who are interested in filling a vacant spot for the West Chicago joint recreation.
District.
Community district?
District.
Thank you. And then we'll be, we'll be making a decision on the appointment after that, so there will be business after executive session today. Can you call the roll please?
No, no.
Second. Call the roll please. Mrs. Callen Walsh?
Yeah.
Ms. Lovett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitehead?
Yes.
Do we have, it's a lot, lot of that, can we come out and then go back in?
Yeah, we could.
We just stay in.
Well, no, we could stay in, we don't, I make the call, I'm just saying so they don't have to wait around and care about.
And then, um, when we decide who it is that we're calling?
Well, we can do it when we come out and from, from executive session. I'm just saying.
Okay.
I agree.
Yes, okay, so we'll, we'll actually be calling in the three people interested first. Should we go on with that order? This is, this is what, you can actually go with that, like, anyway. So wait now, Kristen Moore, sir. Okay, so you'll be first in, we're gonna be going into that.
Okay.
Okay, so we are reconvening at 9:47 PM. And we have a motion to adjourn. So, a second. We have our next board meeting August September 9th, 2024, 7:00 PM. Here in the Board Office, convening. Ms. Ludmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Goleman-Wall?
Yeah.
Thank you.